Everybody please stand in line. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Edward Keller.
My gosh, accident excuse.
Lady Simon here. Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Gerald Bain.
Here.
Mark Dorshardt.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Here.
Robert Muesling.
Here.
Eve Bell.
Accident excuse.
And Kathy H. Schleifer.
Hi, I'm here. Thank you.
I do.
Item number four, amendments to agenda. Hearing none, okay. Item number five, approval of minutes.
Since I've listened to it for hours on the YouTube, I approve, I move to approve the minutes.
Support.
Amy Thomas.
Um, I have one correction. On page five, under ZDA Representatives Report, uh, first sentence says Bain explained that there are no problems with boat house, and I think it should be boat houses. That's it.
Any others?
Uh, Madam Chair. I'm gonna suggest that maybe, since Commissioner Simon wasn't here, I realize she may have watched it, but maybe it's better if someone else makes the motion.
Well, the-
Someone who's, it should be, it's supposed to be someone who's present at the meeting.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 11th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, uh, with the requested, um, modification.
Your support?
Support.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Rod. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And that's approved. Thank you. Item number six is new business, which we do not have any news business for this meeting. Item number seven is unfinished business, which is item A, which is the special land use, et cetera, for the property known as 7317 Road. Um, in our packets, the plan, or, yeah, Planning Commission members, we received numerous other items in regards to this project. Uh, our last review was the review number five, which was from our planners, and we've had time to think about it, a lot of input, and I guess I'd ask first of all if anybody has a motion to make. All right, from the silence, I take it we don't have maybe a motion at this point, so how about we maybe approach this from the viewpoint, if everybody I hope has their fifth review from the planners, that was dated December 3rd, 2019. If we were to turn to page eight. Everybody with me so far? On page eight lists the nine bullet points for special land use approval standards. I would point that out, and also on page 10, I would point out some of the proposed options that were given to us last time, which there are a lot of combination of options we could do. So, that in mind, might I suggest, as a group, and I'm open to suggestions on how to do this, but maybe start with the nine bullet points and-
I agree.
Are we okay with it?
Yeah.
So item number one, or bullet point number one, I should say, would be, number one will be in accordance with the general objectives, intent, and purposes of this ordinance. Does anybody feel free who wants to chime in, yea, nay, or comment, however you want to say it? Don't be shy. Should I choose somebody? Anybody wanna say anything?
I, I think from what's been presented, they do.
Okay.
I agree with number two also.
And number, oh, I'm sorry, I put my page, number two would be-
Master Plan.
Will be in accordance with the goals and objectives at Clay Township Master Plan.
Having gone through a number of iterations and looked at a number of documents, I don't know whether that is, in fact, totally correct. I don't think we have a vacation destination, nor a marina, even though it's not called a marina, operating as a marina, and in today's, yesterday's packet, I received a letter that pointed out that we have such a beautiful marina and compared it to a Chicago marina, which does have connection to a city, to transportation, and we don't have that here. So I don't totally agree that it fits the master plan. There are a few pieces missing, such as being able to raft a boat, dock a boat, walk across a bridge, and join restaurants, facilities, including transportation to and from Clay Township and/or Elginak, or even Baltimore. So there, there is something missing to make it fit into the master plan that also needs better transportation.
Typically, a marina, don't they charge seasonally?
Yeah.
You know, you get a well for a season. Are they charging for a seasonal?
Not necessarily, I don't believe. You can go to a number of places where you pay by the day, by the week.
An hour.
Hour, actually, that's true.
And that would be considered a marina standard?
I, the, the only difference that I really saw in the Chicago marina was, and the only similarity, was that there's no gasoline soul. Um, in general, there are no facilities for the-
I'm sorry to interrupt, there's someone in the back, we can actually hear you up here, so if you would please be considerate and not talk during this-
If, if I look at the facility, including the restaurant, there is a single restroom for ladies, a single restroom for men. If you fully staff that marina, and they run out of space on their, and have to go to, it is a marina, it is their restroom, their restroom facility, it has to be.
Well, how does that affect other establishments that have boat dockage?
I don't believe there's any other establishments that have rafting off.
Okay, I'd like to talk about that a little bit, too. I think the rafting's a real good idea. It keeps that canal clean, you don't have finger docks pointing out, if a 40-foot boat comes in, it's gonna park perpendicular to the seawall, it's gonna block off more, it's gonna inhibit navigation, it's gonna be there year-round. I don't think it's a good idea, docks. It's gonna look more residential, people parking along the wall, it won't look like a marina.
I don't think they set up for anything for it to be a marina right now. They don't have any, I'm not gonna reiterate everything that-
But if you push them in that direction, though.
I'm sorry.
We push them in that direction.
Well, I mean, that may be, I mean, this is a special land use, we're trying to, we're dealing with what the applicants have given us, which has been a lot of different variations along the way, which include parking issues that we have to deal with still and other things, um-
We need to put some things to bed.
Yeah. I won't disagree with that part of it, I just am looking at what we now have in front of us, and what they're requesting, I'm finding the information in the last go-around, how this marina is, or, I don't even know if you wanna label it as a marina, touching the same points Whitey just did, I don't see where they set up to make it convenient for anybody as far as the usage of facilities. I looked at different marinas, I don't see another marina around here that this is mooring or rafting off thing. They're all, I'll call them finger docks, I don't know what else the correct terminology would be.
Right.
And concern about parking from other marinas, too. So that whole issue of whether it's a marina, or whatever you wanna label it, the way it's being presented to us now, I have a difficulty seeing how this is gonna work and be in harmony with the rest of the surrounding area right now.
I do, too, because I'm looking at section four and I'm looking at section seven, because I feel for the people that have to live around there. You know, I don't, they say that they're gonna adjust the noise this way, but I've been there, I've been to that bay, and it gets quite wild out there sometimes, and quite loud, so-
It is commercial property.
And it is commercial property, I get that, but it's zoned right next to residential, and the residential's right on top of it, maybe 60 feet away.
Which maybe takes us to item number three, or boat port number three, which is will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained in harmony with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and that such a use will not change the essential character of the area in which it is proposed. With that being said, I do know there's commercial businesses around there, I did some research, they're not open near the hours that this business is proposing to 2:00 AM in the morning for certain aspects of this project. Um, I'm finding it hard to, with what they're asking us to approve, that it's gonna be in harmony with the rest of the community that we have going in that particular area right now for this. Any other comments, one, two, or three? We'll keep going down.
Well, because, yeah, you look at, look at seven, will not involve uses, activity, processes, materials, and equipment, or conditions, or operations that will be detrimental to any person's property or general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, vibration, smoke, fumes, glare, and odors.
Well, may I add, that should also include sanitary, uh, conditions, if you start putting all those boats there, if you start putting all the people into the proposed pool, and some of the people into the restaurant, as far as I can tell from the site plan, there is a future bathhouse proposed, but right now, between the boats, the pool, and the restaurant, you have one entrance for the guests, one, same entrance for the pool attendants, for the boat users to walk into a small restroom. That's not consistent with, I don't think, what we have in mind in our ordinance. And if we were to approve this, that's, I think, the proposal, um, we have a small square that is indicated as a future proposed bathhouse. If we say go ahead and do that, that bathhouse can be anything under the sun, there's no design for it, I haven't seen anything, and that bothers me.
Wouldn't they have to come back for that?
I don't know, do they?
Uh, it seems to be indicating, yes, they do. If I tuck your nod correctly.
And, you know, I would, I was over there and I walked around there, looked at the traffic and things like that, and what I noticed, you know, in my vehicle, it was really blocking the line of sight, now that rail on the bridge does block your line of sight, but there's also a cyclone fence that comes right up to the rail, that's a little taller, and that blocks anything you're seeing, and that's part of Rose's property, and you have all those boats, those pontoon boats all over the place there, he's got them right up to the road practically, you know, so, I mean, come on. It doesn't matter.
There is no comments at this particular point. Thank you. I guess I'll continue down, anybody jump in when they want to? Item number four, will not be hazardous or disturbing to the existing or future uses in the same general vicinity and in the community as a whole. I guess I'll start with this one, we get to outdoor entertainment and everything else like that, and the proposed hours that they have going at this particular point, can't stand in agreement with that at all. Um, that just seems extremely disruptive to the community that's there. I understand why she's based right there, but, again, it just seems going to 2:00 in the morning, outside entertainment, pool, the whole thing, at least it's presented at this point, seems not in harmony with the rest of the community surrounding it.
I'm of agreeance.
Robert, I mean, if you don't, you don't have to, I'm just-
But five sounds real good.
But five sounds required.
We have public facility services, except I don't totally agree with the highways and streets, but fire protection, stormwater drainage, and all that has been proposed to serve adequately. And if we take the traffic study as, at its words, we won't have any traffic problems either. Don't know about number six, will not create excessive additional requirements in public cost of facilities and services, and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. I have no clue. It all depends how successful that-
I'm sorry.
We can't answer that one.
No, no, nobody can.
We have no clue.
It's to create additional police requirements.
Then we'll quit serving IRA and serve Clay Township instead.
I mean, I, I- I mean, there's really no way to know.
You won't know.
We can't. We can't.
Well, number seven, will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, and equipment, or conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person, property, general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, vibration, smoke, fumes, glare, or odors.
We will know a year after they're then operating. I mean, it's, again, one of those deals that we can't totally predict. We have studies, we have studies that show the noise is okay.
Right.
The glare is okay, uh, we have studies that show the traffic is okay, and, uh, based upon that, uh, we can agree that probably is okay.
Those are all subjective.
Yeah, they are.
But these are the special land use approval standards that we operate under, which is a good point. And Rod Cottney, or whoever, if I'm wrong, special land use approval standards on whatever project, not just this project, is it necessary for that project to meet all nine standards? So, they may have eight out of nine, but it doesn't work. Okay. Item number eight will be, is, will ensure that the environment shall be preserved in its natural state insofar as practical by minimizing tree and soil removal, and by topographic modifications which result in maximum harmony with adjacent areas. It seems like they've tried to do that.
Yeah, I would say so.
Yes, working hard at trying to do that part of it. Um, number nine, will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted within the zoning district.
Okay, I believe it meets that.
Those are our nine standards.
So what do we got?
I shouldn't have been jotting them down.
Land use approval standards.
We need a summary.
We have somewhat, okay, so number one, what did we say about number one? That, there's disagreement?
Will be in accordance with the general, or, ah, let's try that again, general objectives and ten purposes of this ordinance.
No, if it doesn't meet these nice specs, then it can't.
Okay, okay, they'll say, so this is the one, all right. Uh, you don't believe it's in accordance with the master plan, number two, I do.
Which is fine.
Yeah, so that's a disagreement? We gonna vote on each one of these?
No, 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 it's a package.
Okay. We disagree on number three, too.
And again, this also goes towards trying to come up with whoever wants to make a motion, whichever direction.
I don't believe-
Whether it's this whole project, and remember, the restaurant itself is a permitted use.
Right, right.
It may not be the hours and stuff they want, and maybe some of the other items they're asking for, like, uh, outside entertainment, you know, the pool, things of that sort.
Well, is the pool a part, excuse me, is the pool a part of the restaurant or not? That is a special, separate entity, especially when you talk about a built-in bar.
Which was not allowed in this entity.
I don't know how we can approve something that is illegal.
This one we don't.
Yeah, that's besides the point, but is the pool part of the restaurant?
Can you clarify that for us, Rod, real quick?
Wouldn't that be treated the same way as that bathhouse?
I'm sorry.
The same way as that bathhouse?
Well, I'm gonna ask Rod to help us out a little with clarification.
According to your ordinance, in terms of what is a special land use, it's outdoor patios and/or entertainment. Uh, so the pool area is an area where they're having entertainment, is being proposed, it's an outdoor patio area, those, that area is a special land use.
Okay.
Same goes for the tented areas, those are entertainment areas, special land use.
And I'll remind everybody in the fifth review, planners did give us some ideas of what we want to do with this project, or possibly as far as approve the special land use application site plan is presented with no conditions except for paving of a parking lot, which we've talked about that a lot, is required for the zoning ordinance.
I think that's a matter of timing, though, right? If you, when you put it in and wait that six months, and then, I mean, I think they can, if they time it right, they can do it.
We can't give them a-
Right, we can't give that to them.
Six months, though, and I think, we talked about this last time, if they complete their construction in fall, and they pave in the early spring, they're fine.
Yes, it's, it's dependent on, but these are just-
Right, we got no control over that.
Right, we understand that part of it, I'm just reiterating what was in-
Yes, okay.
A couple options that could be, I mean, we can come up with something totally different, or we can improve it like you just said, as-
Or a combination.
Or a combination, true. Let me ask you this, for special land use, no matter what happens tonight as far as approval, non-approval, partly approved, I mean, I don't know where we're going at this point, is there any restrictions for, um, coming back and asking for a different special land use, like, is there like a one-year, you know, you gotta wait?
Yes, according to your ordinance, if you, if you're denied a special land use, you have to wait a year before you come back and reapply.
Okay.
But that, that's for that specific land use.
Just for that particular land use.
Where you're kinda asking is, if it was different, though, they could still apply for a different land use.
They can apply for a different land use, they could also apply to ask for the, for it to be modified, too, for example, you know, someone, like, for one example, maybe you could approve a special land use with a certain set of conditions, and then that use may operate for a certain period of time, and then the applicant could come back and said, well, you've seen how this operates, I want to increase the intensity or the capacity, and here's how I can show you that that's working, and they could ask for that to be increased, um, so that's, that's a change in the condition, that's not applying for a special land use that was denied, so that could be requested, as an example.
It's like approval of the marina with no overnight use, we could do that, because when we first started this project, there was not a request for an overnight, there would be no overnights, now we're up to, we want up to 15 days.
Yeah, yes, and I think as you look at these special land use standards, if you find that you're having an issue with one or more of them, is there some level of intensity that could be modified that would then make it so that that could be satisfied?
Which would have to be incorporated into our motion.
And that would have to be incorporated in the motion, so that might be something you think about. It's not necessarily all or nothing, because you can, uh, attach reasonable conditions to your approval, and you can specify a level of activity that you believe would in fact meet these special land use standards, so think about that also as you're looking at this information.
And on top of that, I believe at one of these many hearings we've had in regards to this project, have it had it happen before, but maybe drawing up some sort of a, I don't know if you wanna call it a contract, but a very clear understanding.
Um, there wouldn't be a contract, but there would be, um, potentially just a special land use permit that lists out the conditions, that would then be issued so that everyone's clear what the conditions were if you choose to approve the special land use, yes.
Do we have a form for that, that we could fill out?
Yes, we can, we have one we can provide you, absolutely. What we would do is, if you choose to approve the special land use, once you list out those conditions in your motion, we would then put that in that form, and the chair could sign that, that could be provided to the applicant, and then they would have the special land use permit that reflects the conditions of the planning commission.
All right, I've, I think I've given as much information and guidance at this particular point, I think it really does come down to a motion, one way or the other, on whatever anybody is thinking, however, I mean, there is a ton of information, and what the applicants are requesting for special land use is what's just pointed out, we can give them everything, we can give them nothing, we can do something in between, restaurant, again, they're entitled to have that, maybe not to what they're looking for, but there's, go ahead.
So they can come back after a year and go again at the marina and the pool.
They can go for the tented areas, um, one of the things we've talked about very in doubt is this parking, depending what gets approved, if it doesn't get approved, as far as restaurant-wise, we know they need the parking for the restaurant.
Right, they don't need the parking for nothing else.
With everything else, we have to either be willing to give them, was it the 25% for boats, you know, that type thing, um, we've talked about that quite a bit, um, tented areas, that takes into another, you know, I think the last go-around was, we're not gonna have, if we have a tented area, we're not gonna have the restaurant open at the same time, you know, that type of scenario, I'm not gonna recast everything, I hope everybody, if you have questions, please, don't hesitate to ask us.
Well, but, again, my concern would be when we start talking about putting, uh, partial special land use into a motion, that when we start talking about what is required and what is not required, it is very difficult for me to determine, if you allow parking for 15, uh, rafting, I'm sorry, for 15 days, I would suggest that if I raft there for 15 days, and my boat is there, I'd be calling my local car dealership or car rental to bring me a car so I could go somewhere, because I'm not gonna sit on that boat for 15 days, or if it stays there, somebody has to come and pick me up, and if something else isn't used, there would be a sign, sorry, parking lot closed, you have to leave. Those are the kinds of conditions that I am concerned with, that can occur as we even start to put partial special land use into a motion, and I wouldn't want, number one, have to cite that motion, and number two, to write it down on that sheet of paper here. I hope you're recording that.
We can, we can, uh, hold that waiver on the boat, you know, the parking, until some of these conditions are met, and at that time-
I don't know, can we do that?
I don't think you-
I'm not following what you just said, could you say that one more time?
Because we have to give them a waiver on the parking for the boats, so they increase their parking, right? So-
Only if they give them a grant.
They're requesting that-
They're requesting it.
That they have a reduction in parking spaces.
Yeah, we don't have to give it to them.
Because of the, of the boats, correct.
Right.
And we could issue that when maybe some of these other things are addressed.
I understand that, but I'd hate to have it come back in a year and go through the whole mess again.
Well, we could give an approval, but omit the waiver until these items are addressed. Does that make sense?
Well, if you approve the rafting, and the pool, and the restaurant, I'm still concerned with the sanitary conditions that will exist at that site.
And the parking.
And, well, the parking, always, but you have one restroom, you have two entrances coming into the restaurant, and I'd hate to have a party of four to come through there while a party of three is walking through there all wet, going to the restrooms, and it doesn't make sense not to have a facility for the pool area. There should be showers. Those are the kind of things I, I had time to look at while I was recuperating, I'm sorry.
I guess I'm sorry.
Could we limit the occupancy of, say, like, obvious, like, with the restaurant in the pool area, or the restaurant in the vent area, they don't have enough parking without the waiver for, like, the restaurant in the pool, can we limit the occupancy of the pool area dependent on the parking? So say, right now, they have 223 for the maximum occupancy of the pool area, if we limit the- If we limit the occupancy to 118, then they have enough parking with the restaurant and the pool area.
And, and just to be clear, there, there's, this can go in a couple of different scenarios. They may have the pool closed and everyone's in the tent area and then it would be over 400, okay? Or it might vice versa. So, they're, they're looking for flexibility. This is not the only thing, just so you, you know, that it could be, everybody's in the pool area or everybody's in the tent area or a combination, but the restaurant would be closed in that scenario. So, that's, that's what they're proposing. But to answer your question, yes, if you're concerned that that is not, that that's too mu, too many people and that you're concerned about the waiver and the, and the boats, you can not allow the waiver or allow, not as much as 25%, allow something less. Yes, you can modify that based upon what you believe is, is reasonable and can be parked on the site.
Well, because I'm, I'm looking at it and we have 106 provided spots. So, if the, if we did the restaurant and limited the occupancy of the pool area and didn't give them the event area per se, because we don't have, we can approve the pool area and the event area, they both don't have to be approved simultaneously.
That's true, although another option would be to just approve an event number of people that would be permitted and allow the flexibility to move back and forth because I think that's really what they're looking for because they may have, you know, you may start a reception for a wedding out by the pool area and then move over to the tent later. So, I, I think it gets a little difficult trying to limit it to a specific. It's more, it's an outdoor event space. I think you need to pick a number that makes sense and, and then suggest that, that they would just not be able to exceed that number outdoor and it would go to either one of those spaces. I, I think that's probably a more logical, based on the way it functions and they're proposing that it functions, I think that's a more logical way to look at it. But obviously, you can do whatever you think's appropriate.
Well, because I'm kinda looking at it as if, I don't know if I feel, how, how is it controlled if we say, because they can say that they're gonna close a restaurant down, but how is that pleased? How is that handled?
Just like any other condition.
So...
They, you know, they've gotta demonstrate and if there's an issue, you're gonna go out and have a code enforcement officer look at it and if they have more people, then you're gonna issue a violation.
As it exists now, if you close the restaurant, are you gonna leave the restrooms open?
Oh, I think they're, I think they're gonna be open, yes. I think they're talking about the seating capacity of the restaurant.
I know that.
Because that staff in the kitchen will likely be working to serve the event, potentially in one case, and then it could be catered. I think there's a number of different varieties of potential that could happen.
Right.
It could be a combination, it could be one or the other.
I guess I'm having the same issues I had since we went with this project. Parking is a problem, no matter how we look at it. The proposed hours in this last booklet they gave us of operation for outdoor entertainment, I don't think anywhere in this township we've done that, to that what they're requesting. I mean, I, obviously, we can limit it. We, I think the only thing we've done is, and I probably got the wrong name on it, Rocks Restaurant or whatever?
On the Rocks.
On the Rocks. At the time...
Sunset Bay or something.
It was something else at the time, different people running it and we, they wanted a tiki bar and everything else and we said they could have their entertainment inside and use speakers to go outside, but because in respect for the surrounding community, which is residential, they have boat wells and people can come by boat and everything else like that, we just thought, at that particular time, I can't even tell you what year it was, to try to balance it with the community and give the owners an opportunity. I heard last year was not such a great year for the harmonious, you know, neighborhood. I have concern with that still. I guess right now those are my two main concerns, is trying to make these numbers work. And I do have an issue with going from no one staying overnight to we're gonna go up to 15 days and I don't know if you wanna call it a marina, whatever you wanna call it. It just doesn't, doing my, looking at other marinas around here, it just does not seem to fit.
It's not conforming.
At this point. And I'm looking at page six of 16 of the last, I'll call it pamphlet, booklet, whatever you wanna call it. Page seven of 16, they're kinda outlining, page six of 16 outlines phase one, two, three of what they're proposing, obviously, the proposal. And page seven shows the building total areas, restaurant, you know, pool area and what they're looking for and hours of operation. And I know the comment had been made about if a lot's full, put a sign if a lot's full, but I can't imagine somebody's coming for a wedding and I know it's been said over and over again, everybody's coming by boat. I'm just finding the proposals a little hard for picturing it in practicality how it's gonna work. I'm open to suggestions from planning commission numbers. Again, it doesn't have to be anything that's in writing that we've seen so far, but it definitely involves a motion and more, if you have more comments or more questions of whomever, please feel free to ask. It's a big project and we spent a lot of time with this, so...
If you're looking at page seven, as I have also, the proposed hours of operation of the pool area, Thursday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., that's an entertainment area. That's totally unrealistic for the neighborhood, even for the people on the boats trying to go to sleep. Now, the pool, May 1st to November 1st, Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to sunset, that makes a lot of sense because it gets too cold out there with the breeze coming up. Vent areas, again, Thursday, Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. If you have a wedding of, unfortunately, somebody a lot younger than I am and you've got one of those nice bands, it's gonna be noisy. And certainly, our proposed hours, transient marine seasonal, May 1 through November 1, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, but the dock master is only gonna be there from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. weekends per customer patronage requirement. Dock support from restaurant and management and staff as required. 24 hours surveillance with security as required, as required. And those are some of the answers that, since I missed last month's meeting, to our 42 questions, as required, as required, is not very specific in my mind. So, I, as far as I am concerned, I could easily recommend approval for the restaurant and can possibly the additional area that is between the restaurant and the pool, I don't know how many feet it is now offhand, so that you could have some outside guests during the summer sitting out there before 8:00, 8:00 p.m., before the bugs come. I don't think I can go any further than that if I were to make the motion.
Most weddings and stuff that I've been to, you know, the entertainment goes to like 11 o'clock outside.
2:00 a.m.
Oh, I know, but we could, we could, you know, we could put 11 o'clock on there, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely. You can modify the hours if you think it's appropriate and you can modify the number of people.
Limit the outdoor entertainment till 11:00 p.m.
Is outdoor entertainment, the definition applied to a tented event area? Do you know what I'm asking? Because there's entertainment, could be a building for the restaurant, how we did with that other restaurant with them having their tiki bar there outside, decking and drinks being served with, I believe it was speakers, at a certain decibel. How does that relate to if there's a tented area for whatever purpose, wedding or not, as far as outside entertainment?
Yes, it, your ordinance says it speaks to outdoor dining and live entertainment. I, I would say that the pool area and the tented area both fall under that because that's what's happening. And it says right in your ordinance, under that section 20 dash 31, the planning commission may limit days and hours of operation as well as noise levels to provide protection to adjoining in nearby residential areas.
Clarification on the tented area? This is a tented area, they're talking about keeping up, not taking down?
It, it would be, it, it could stay up for, I mean, it could, it could go up for several weeks, it might come up and down. I think it depends on the amount of business they get. I think that's how it was described.
How does that relate to the temporary garages that can only stay up for six months at a time? Definitely, isn't that right?
Temporary, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
One of those sheds 10 by 20.
Yeah.
We had a lot of controversy going here for years for one of those things.
It's, your ordinance says outdoor dining or live entertainment areas for more than 30 patrons or that use awnings, roofs or similar permanent or temporary structures to extend the season and or avoid inclement weather conditions such as rain may be required to provide additional parking. So, it anticipates you can do it, they may be required to park, which is what you're accommodating with this proposal as, so if you feel it's appropriate.
We're back to our parking issue.
Back to parking, right. And they're, and they're calculating parking based on an occupancy of those coming to those areas, so they're, they are factoring that in. If you accept that that's appropriate, then you can approve that. So, it, it gives you some guidelines in terms of the, the capacity and what have you in the ordinance. So, you do, like I said, you do have the ability to limit the hours and limit the occupancy and see how it works and then they could come back and ask for more at some point, too.
Come back and ask for more?
In terms of, of ask that the application, the approval be amended at a time in the future.
For that one year or after?
Before, yeah, they could come back before because if you've granted it, then it's approved.
Okay.
And then they could ask for it to be modified. For example, if you said you can have what you're looking for, but your outdoors, tented area can't, you can't have more than X number of events per year at this level and all the other events have to be at this level. For example, you could do something like that and then you would be able to try out the capacity or you can just say it's a lower level and you try it out at a lower level and then if that's working, then they could come back and ask for more and then you can bump it up to a higher level. Those are all things you can take into consideration in accordance with your ordinance.
Which would also give us maybe a good working example of how parking works and how traffic item 29 is gonna work, which I still am concerned about that part of it.
With the phased project, too, the pool's not going in for some time, correct?
Uh, pool's supposedly going in 20, pool, construction pool and pool event area 2021. Supposedly for this year, phase one.
So, we could reevaluate them after phase one?
You, you could approve through phase one and ask that it come back for consideration.
Okay, phase one is installation of, I wanna just paraphrase, seawall, okay? Started in the spring of 2019. Site plan utilities installed, summer 2020. Utility, construction, backfilling, summer 2020. Excavation, restaurant location, summer 2020. Partial temporary gravel parking lot, 2020 summer. Construction event areas, summer 2020. Steel cement and rail bridge improvements, summer 2020. Partial site dredging, spring 2020. Construction of restaurants, spring 2020. That's phase one. Phase two, it's the restaurant opening, I'm paraphrasing, restaurant opening, fall 2020. Open transient marina, fall 2020. Open event area one, fall of 2020.
Can I make a motion? I move that we approve phase one and phase two until the third item, open restaurant, fall 2020. Which would go through the construction and get us through there and then if that rest of the phase can be left open, we can move on that as soon as that is finished.
I'll second that.
Which means that the open transient marina and the open event area is not included in a motion.
Note it in there.
Okay.
Well, he said phase, he said phase two, which is...
Phase two, no, no, only the first three items.
He said phase two up to the restaurant.
Okay.
That's why I'm very, very good with what we're doing.
What, are we still addressing the hours of operation?
That was my next question.
Uh, but, but we're not in there. We don't have any of that.
Well, if you get the restaurant open in the fall of 2020.
You shouldn't, I think you should... The inventory includes the pool.
Doesn't the restaurant include an outdoor eating area, though?
I think you should be able to run the event area minus the pool in phase two.
I'm sorry, I can't hear y'all.
He should be able to run, you know, open event area one in 2020. The pool's not gonna be there, but he should be able to still hold weddings or whatever.
Well, that's not where he's motion at this, to support you, but that's not where he's motion at this point. I'm thinking, hold on a second. The restaurant is a permitted use.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
But with that restaurant, the special land use would be the outside, color around...
The pool and the event area.
Anyway, thank you. So...
I could modify the motion to include the patio, but it's not listed here.
No, and I'm not asking you to, I'm just wanting to point out, because we've gone through this a couple of times.
Because the pool area would include all of that under phase three, it appears.
The patio?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, the town here, it says restaurant with pool and pool event area, page six of 16.
Read that again? Well, they're saying where it's gonna be located in that sentence, it says restaurant slash bar with a pool and pool event area will be located on the southwest end of the island, but Whitey, Whitey, you wanna repeat your motion? Or we can have...
He should be able to come, to do in phase three, two, the installation of the seawall, the 614 feet.
Yes, you, you, and, and the finish coat and the parking lot needs to be incorporated as well, that's...
Is the parking lot part of the requirement for that, for the restaurant?
It is a requirement, but it's also in phase three, so I'm a little concerned that you're, the way you're phrasing the motion, you need to make sure it's including all the things it needs to include.
Okay, how about we have, you read back what we've, Whitey's so far said for the motion and then we can go from there. How's that?
Prophase one and two until all restaurant opening, not including the transient marina and the tented event area.
Okay.
At least not include the parking lot in there.
Right, so with that understanding right there, Whitey, do you, is his motion he's putting together, so go ahead.
Well, the thing is, we have the partial temporary gravel parking lot completed in 2020. So, that has the parking lot there, but it is not completely in accordance with our ordinance, which would be finished.
Right.
You would need to include the third bullet of phase three.
Right.
The third...
The phase three.
Finish codes.
All right. I, I can do that in my motion.
And, and do you wanna allow the installation of the second phase of the, of the seawall? It's also the second bullet in phase two?
Phase two or...
Phase three, I'm sorry, phase three.
Yeah, we can do that also according to the proposal on page six of 16. So, we're all clear and maybe we should include this page then as part of our approval.
May, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Does the seawall, the seawall is not, if it's worded correctly, the seawall is not limited by anything for the special land use, correct? not limited by anything for the special land use, correct?
You're just approving the seawall, the question is whether or not you're gonna approve the, the boats, that's a, that's your decision.
So the seawall can happen no matter what, so...
He's already got the permits.
Yeah.
The DQ regulations.
Because, here's, can I kinda go with what I, mention what I've kinda put together here? I was looking to propose that the special land use for the event area, I switched it to the event area one instead of the pool area.
Right.
And to be approved with the maximum occupancies of the restaurant or, and the event area being limited to what they are stated by, but combined occupancy of no more than, I have to redo the math, but no more than what is allowed between the areas for the parking that they have. So, like with the pool area is, I did the math...
So you're saying two hundred and twenty-three occupants in the pool area or, or the tented areas maximum of, to get combined, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so it'd be a maximum of two hundred and fifty-two occupants total between the restaurant and the event area.
Not the pool.
Not the pool, well, I, I, this, I switched it because that's the event area they have opening first, so I switched, I originally was gonna say the pool, but since they have the event area that they wanna open first, it'd be event area and restaurant capacity maxed out at two hundred and fifty-two. And then we could limit the hours of the outdoor entertainment and then state...
In with the restaurant or the...
For, it'd be the outdoor entertainment for the outdoor area, it'd be the event area, because the, the restaurant without the pool area does not have an outdoor entertainment area, correct?
Uh, depends on how it operates.
Okay, so we can make, we could encompass all areas being, uh, to the outdoor entertainment to whatever time we decide and not include the transient marina or pool event area and make it pertinent to, like, for the parking lot finishing per ordinance. So now we're taking the phase one, phase two, phase three aspects out of it. So we don't have to say, "Fa- we approve phase one up and phase two up to this point, it's, we approve the special land use for the outdoor event area and we, we limit the occupancy with the parking that they're allowed."
How are you gonna limit that? How are you gonna limit that? How are we gonna limit that?
As Rod said, it'd have to...
Rod said it's an enforcement issue, how are we gonna enforce that? That's my only concern with what you're going with.
I don't know if that's our...
You're gonna have to enforce any number.
But we're gonna have to enforce it either way.
Right, so if you limit it to a number, then so many seats they're gonna be able to have in a tent and it's, and, and the total occupancy is the number you state and whatever that number comes out to.
The only thing I would say, it's written real nice, point one, point two, point three, and we can take, do you have that page?
Yeah.
If we take phase one in total, go to points one, two, three...
In phase two.
In phase two, and then, as you indicate, add the open event area also and include the installation of seawall and finish code a hundred and six car, parking lot, and indicate right here as we attach this page, limited to two hundred and fifty-two guests between...
Maximum, maximum guests.
Maximum guests.
And then we can just attach this page.
Well, that's...
This doesn't address the outdoor entertainment.
We're gonna have to add that in, but we gotta...
We can add all that in at a time.
So is it your intent to, it sounds like, just so I'm being clear, you're allowing the pool event area to be constructed, 'cause I thought I heard that mentioned, you're not?
No.
No.
Okay, so you're...
So what's open event area would...
Yeah, where's that at?
Where's that?
Event area one? That's the tent, he should have that, too.
A tent at the front?
It's out south of there, south of the restaurant, right?
I don't know, that's why I'm asking questions at this point.
More, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I went the other way.
So you're, you're, you're allowing the tented area and you're allowing the restaurant, not the pool, and the tented area...
One.
Number one, as a maximum capacity, the, whatever, the total number of, of guests that can be on that site at any one time is limited to two hundred and fifty-two.
For those permitted uses, including some of special land use.
Right, combination, so the combination of the restaurant and the...
Partial...
So if they close the restaurant down, all two fifty-two can be in the tents.
Yes. I don't know how it's gonna be two fifty-two for... The kitchen will have to be open.
Yeah, I thought it was like three fifty-seven. If you look at their chart for the hundred and six spots.
Well, you can't put that many in the parking lot, sir.
Well, if...
Is that counting the...
Nope.
This is, I don't see the waiver in this one. Okay, and here's the waiver down below.
Well, if they don't do the transient marina, they can't have the...
I get two hundred, I get three hundred and fifty-seven.
So...
If I'm operating that and that, right?
No waiver. We're limited to a hundred and six parking spots and...
How you gonna get in, if you got two hundred and fifty-two people?
Well, one oh six times two and a half.
I mean, come on.
So if you, if you accept the formula of...
Okay, here it is right here.
Three people per car, then the two fifty-two would require eighty-four parking spaces. If you think there's gonna be less than that, then you'll need more parking, but, so you could, if you, if you accept the three persons per car, you could up the two fifty-two number to provide for, um, three times...
It just seems pretty light.
Three eighteen.
You gotta include the staff.
You gotta include staffing, right?
Yeah, staff.
And they propose twenty-five people.
Right, three eighteen, one oh six times three?
One oh six, right.
Three eighteen plus, minus twenty-five staff. So you, you'd still be low three hundred, total occupancy.
So you're about two, yeah, you're, you're, yeah, you're right around that, that area if you take out the...
Not a bad number.
Wasn't a bad number.
Well, and I, I just came up with that because I, the, I left, I didn't touch the restaurant occupancy, because if the restaurant occupancy is open and the event area is open, then they'd be limited to, I think it was a hundred and eighteen for the event area, and so I just took the one eighteen and added it to the occupancy of the one thirty-four for the restaurant, and that's where I came up with the number.
Yeah, so, yeah, so your two fifty-two, that's eighty-four spaces, and the balance of the spaces would be for the, for the, for the employees, right? And staff.
What would you like to limit the operation to?
I...
The sound.
We're not providing the waiver, then I take it, that's, and the reason is...
If, if they have no transient marina, they cannot have a waiver.
'Cause it's not in the, we're not permitting it in phase two, okay? They can come back to that. Okay. So when they get that, their parking would increase at that point in time.
If they get it, we're not saying they're going to get it, please don't assume that that's what we're gonna do.
No, but that's what will happen.
Maybe not get anything other than what's maybe being proposed right now, this may be it, who knows? It's just, um...
At least that can get them started and we can continue to see what happens.
Right.
I'm tired, it's been a year.
Sure.
And I missed one meeting.
Well, just 'cause you're tired, it's been a year, that doesn't count.
No, I mean, and, I, I'm sure the applicant is tired, too, of coming here every month.
What's the total number gonna be, if you said three eighteen?
Yeah, two fifty-two.
Two fifty-two is, was the most, was the suggestion for the total occupancy.
And...
Total occupancy meaning...
Number of people, guests.
Guests, yes, and if you add the twenty-five, you're at the two seventy-five, and we're right at the limit of three per car.
Correct, yeah, 'cause with the two fifty-two, you get eighty-four spaces at three persons per, and then you've got the employees, you've got another...
Sure, sure.
Do we even know the motion now, we're in?
No, we're gonna have Sue repeal.
Hours of operation.
Well, what are the hours of operation that you would like for the entertainment? It has to be included on this sheet.
I, I think outdoor entertainment, no outdoor entertainment after eleven.
It corresponds with a lot of the other...
The rest that we have here, yeah.
Yep, I'll go with that.
Eleven.
Do we wanna have the outdoor entertainment all week or limited to...
Wait, an outdoor entertainment for...
The event areas.
If you have a wedding on Monday night or Tuesday night, you need it.
Yeah.
Come on, at eleven o'clock, I know it's a working day, but some of us are retired.
But that's for the tented area, not for the dining area.
Dining area inside is...
It's inside.
They can wait until two AM.
Any outdoor entertainment till eleven, at eleven it ends.
No.
No.
No, no, hold on. Whoa, hold on. Your motion so far is saying a tented area, correct?
Area number one. Event, event, it's called event area one.
Correct. And event area number one is... What?
A tent.
Okay, so that's the only entertainment outside that can be done, not on a patio area, correct?
Well, we don't really have a patio in unless we include the patio with the restaurant, I know.
But I wanna make sure we understand that's...
Well, and that, that's what Rod was saying, though, depending on how the restaurant...
Yeah, he said that includes patio.
It, it could, just because the pool's not approved, there could be some patio area outside.
Associate the restaurant, yeah, this covered patio that's associated with the restaurant.
That is part of the restaurant.
Right.
Yes.
But it doesn't extend towards the pool from there and it doesn't include the bar.
That's, that's what your motion, you're, you're suggesting that it just be a covered patio area that's part of the restaurant, it sounds like that's what you're saying?
Yes.
I can't hear you.
We're gonna let that go to two?
But, no, 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 no.
No, it's covered area at the bar, at the building.
It's not considered indoors, it's part of the patio.
That's why all the outdoor ener, all outdoor entertainment would have to be included at eleven.
Even outside, you walk out the door.
But if the, but let me just ask a question, if this is an outdoor dining associated with the restaurant and there's not entertainment, are you putting a limit on that?
That's where I'm going and heading to.
That's a different, that's different.
Because if he has outdoor dining and everybody wants to sit by the water and it's two AM in the morning...
So, do we, we could approve it with entertainment ending at eleven and dining at the two AM?
Well, the bar operations are until two AM, that's the law in Michigan, that's not a problem.
Right.
The outdoor dining area is still a special land use, correct?
That's correct.
So we can limit the hours of the outdoor...
I don't know how the liquor license is providing for liquor service in an outdoor area.
Just go through the approval process, has to be closed.
Yeah, you get a special license.
Yeah, you have to be, you have to have a gate around it.
Special license for the outside, so you need a license for that.
Liquor control.
But we could, we could limit...
You have nothing to do with that.
No, but we could limit the outdoor entertainment, we could end at eleven, but if he has exterior dining that is encompassed, then we could let, that is still a special land use, so we can limit that, the hours of operation for outdoor, outdoor dining as well.
You can't...
I agree with you on that.
I think that's too much minutia.
Yeah.
And I think...
And how many restaurants are open until two AM serving?
Confusing.
Right, we're getting one.
No, I don't think we need to worry about the pool.
I have a problem approving outdoor entertainment with where these people live.
Yes.
Ten AM, uh, ten PM.
Ten AM?
Ten. Ten PM, eleven PM, yes.
I understand if there's a wedding, yeah, obviously you're gonna want music at your wedding.
I agree with Chris, I have a problem with approving just outdoor entertainment because of the neighborhood where...
They're close?
They're close.
Well, that, that, that boils down to article seven.
It does, it goes back to number seven, that we're trying to...
That's exactly what I said.
We're trying to, as special land use, those nine points, I don't see where it fits with tented area, we'll see what happens, but that's proposed to stop at eleven, correct?
Yes.
So, okay, like it's, I understand that, but as far as the attached patio, and it's not a pool area, yeah, but that outside...
Patio.
Patio area, I'm having a problem having music and or whatever to, two AM or...
No, not two AM.
Or eleven, whatever, I just, I don't see a... But it's your motion.
No, 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 we, we all live by the water, or most of us live by the water, and we know how water carries noise.
It does, very much.
We all understand that.
Yes.
No, I, as I indicated and as we've gone through, the current motion stands at a combination of restaurant and special land use to include phase one on page six of sixteen, including phase two, except for the marina, including phase three installation, six hundred and fourteen linear feet of steel seawall and finish coat, the hundred and six car, parking lot. With the proviso that the maximum occupancy between the restaurant and open event area is limited to a maximum of two hundred and fifty-two and entertainment outside is limited at all venues.
Limited to the tented area.
Limited to the tented area to eleven PM, yes?
I'm a rush, I was down at ten PM.
Well, we have a noise ordinance at ten.
The noise ordinance applies, too.
So you have a motion, you see if someone seconded it, someone just made a motion.
I have a question on motion.
You should have a second before, well...
Before we discuss it.
Before you discuss it, yeah.
Guys, for lack of a second, I withdraw my motion.
All right. Anybody else wanna try a motion?
I'm working on one.
So eleven, you wanna bump it down to ten o'clock, that's not unreasonable, I think like, I think...
It's a noise ordinance that we have already.
Is it?
Yes.
So then there's no reason to even have it in there, then?
Enforcement. And if we have it in there, at least you can go there and...
We better make sure we're right in line with it, or just point to it and say, in line with...
My other thought is, restaurant's gonna be open, the tented area's gonna be open, they proposed, the majority of people are gonna come by boats. They have seawall, I understand, they're, we're not approving the marina, but what's to stop the rafting off from happening? To attend these functions?
Nothing.
Can we put that in the motion?
I don't see how you can do that. What, what, what is your, is it, is the rafting a concern?
Yeah, it's...
Then you can approve, or you can bring one boat up to the seawall along the seawall, but no rafting, that, you can do that. And then if that works out, they can come back and ask for rafting at a later point, but you're building a sea...
They're gonna do it anyways.
Yeah, you're, they're building a seawall, they're building all the facilities, so, I mean, seems like having at least one deep is, is something to consider. And then you can talk about how long they can stay there, that's a separate question. I mean...
Go ahead. When the bar closes.
So no overnight is what you're saying?
Or just, or just overnight, one, one overnight.
Or just one overnight.
Because do you really want people who are leaving in a, drunk, to get in their boat and go?
No more than I want them to get in their car.
No more than getting in their car, so that could be, that's another option.
But if we have not addressed the request for this marine operation, do we even have to address that in our motion? It is not a part.
The seawall?
Well, the seawall is.
Right. You, you don't have to, you could say no, no boats. I don't know if you want to do that.
No, I.
Okay, so, I mean, so if you're allowing boats, then I think you need to specify what the conditions are, is it as, as proposed, or is it something different?
Because you know they're gonna come anyways by boat.
Well, we did not include the transit dockage for recreational boaters. It's under the business opportunity that they provide us with. And we have not, uh.
Yep.
Proposed that the transit marina can be opened in the fall of twenty twenty. Therefore, you can come up to the seawall and have passengers step on the boardwalk and go to the wedding, or to the restaurant. If the young man wants to keep his boat there until they are done eating, I don't see whether that's necessarily bad. And so, uh, at least, you know, I, I would like to see the restaurant and the tented area, if we prove, if we were to approve it as we discussed now, that it is successful. And you need people to get there, and not everybody drives. I, I think people that generally raft do so in the bay, and there are more than four abreast or six abreast or fifty abreast, so I, I think that would at least give them a reasonable chance to start the business opportunity on the island.
So you need a motion now?
I, there's no motion, you move through it.
I'll have one in a minute.
Anybody can make a motion at this point, Chris? Harold, I mean, you don't, we don't have to wait for you either, I mean, do whatever.
I'm just.
All right, I'll give it a try.
I can't make a motion, so somebody else is gonna have to get this one.
Make a, uh, make a motion to approve the project, uh, through phase one, phase two, complete the temp gravel parking lot, lighting and restaurant area landscaping, uh, open the restaurant, no transient marina at this time, and event area one open. Uh, we can skip the seawall, because that's gonna get done anyways, and phase three, the finish coat, the parking lot, with the outdoor entertainment to be restricted to ten PM, and one night overstay for boaters. And this is to be reevaluated one year from now.
Is there a capacity?
Oh, with the capacity of the, uh, restaurant and the event area one not to exceed two hundred and fifty-two, uh, customers total. I just called it outdoor entertainment. All right, then, well, is that event area one, it's gotta be in that square, is that what you're talking about, over where the tent is? So it'd be like away from?
Tented area is off.
Okay, all right. With the outdoor entertainment restricted to ten PM and the tented area.
Ten or eleven?
Ten.
And so, and you're including the covered patio outside the restaurant for outdoor dining associated with the restaurant, correct?
Yes. With the outdoor patio dining associated with the restaurant included.
And all of the seawall?
Is that necessary? I think he's.
Yeah, I think you.
It's permitted.
Yeah, I would just include it all, yeah.
All right, along with the six hundred and fourteen linear feet of steel seawall and pilings.
Item two and phase three.
Right, right, correct.
So we got item two in three.
And item three in three.
Item three in three. No open transit marina, and all of, uh, phase one. I second that. Now we can discuss it.
Now we can discuss it.
And then, just to clarify, this is a motion to approve special land use and site plan as.
Combination as it is presented on page six of sixteen.
Yes.
Since we can discuss it now.
No, there's not a second. There was a second.
As a second, time and seconds.
The parking lot should be completed per ordinance. I don't know if their timeline here would accommodate that.
You, you, yeah, you can't waive the ordinance, so it has to be completed in accordance with the ordinance.
It has to be done.
Tom, I'm sorry, did your motion address restaurant hours?
No.
I'm trying to find what they posted.
Oh, that's page.
Eleven, eleven, Sunday through Wednesday, Thursday through Saturday, eleven to twelve.
On page seven.
That's.
Page seven.
It's reasonable.
Yeah, that's, I'm good with that, it's legal.
Well, it's legal for inside, not necessarily outside.
Right.
Right.
That's, I think, maybe what Chris is trying to differentiate or ask the question of. Inside, they can be open to two AM, serve whatever they want, dinner and, or food and drinks.
Dance.
Correct. The question is the patio area outside, do you, which is a special land use, do you want to limit that because of the area it's in with the rest of the people there?
Because, because as the motion stands, that would be approved, but it's not an area for entertainment, it's a dining area.
Right, it's a dining area.
And it doesn't, and it has the hours of operation in accordance with whatever the Liquor Control Commission would permit.
Right.
They can eat there till two AM.
Correct.
Any more discussion? Harold, any more discussion, questions, comments, anybody?
Nope, it's the noise ordinance attempt.
Could you restate the motion, please? I'm sorry, it's probably, yeah. You're gonna have to talk up, I'm sorry.
Through site plan and special land use, through phase one, phase two, no transient marina, including the event area, tented area. Phase three, items two and three, which are installation of the seawall and the finish coats of the parking lot, restrict outdoor entertainment to ten PM, limit one night overstay for boaters, maximum capacity restaurant and event area not to exceed two hundred and fifty-two customers total, reevaluate every year, include the concrete outdoor patio dining within the restaurant, and seawalls.
Which is open event area one.
You said, what did you say about the, about the entertainment part again, I'm sorry? Outdoor and tented area restricted to ten PM. Does event area one? Yeah, they call it ten event, open event area one.
Still have time. Burtle's.
But they're saying they think that you may have more than the number for your.
Yeah.
Do you understand?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's. That's where, exactly where I, that's exactly where I said it. I would, I would, I would have worded it slightly different, but it's, it's immaterial, yeah.
Clarification on the rafting off with this motion as it says.
Sounds like it's, you're, you're allowing boats just overnight, one night, and I, and it's my understanding it's as proposed.
Which would be the rafting off.
And, and, and keep in mind that there were those, if you're allowing the rafting, that there were the signs recommended by the Army Corps that are stated in our letter, and I would recommend that that be included, that those signs be part of the motion, that those be installed.
We don't have to necessarily, and I'm just talking aloud, because at one point there's four deep, one point there's three deep or whatever, we don't necessarily have to allow that, we can allow one at the dock and one rafting.
But I believe the motion that's been made and seconded did not restrict, correct?
And now we can discuss it, I guess that was not in that motion, so I guess that would be my concern still as far as the rafting off.
So if, if we want to adjust the rafting off, then we'd have to.
Someone would have to make a motion to amend the motion.
Okay.
He's going to.
Looks like he's gonna try. Go for it.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to allow a single boat along the seawall as proposed with no rafting.
I'm gonna let Sue finish writing, because she's, she's.
So it's just plain old no rafting allowed, that's not.
Not at this point.
Not at this point.
Let me know when you're ready, Sue, okay? You okay? I hesitate to ask if the motion will be repeated, but, um, everybody understand the first motion, the amended motion, which is really dis.
That's all you're voting on is the amendment. You're only voting on rafting right now. You're voting to amend the original motion to include this additional stipulation, that's all you're voting on right now.
Any discussion on the rafting part? Go ahead, well, when you're ready. We don't have to vote on the first part until we vote on.
No, you have to vote on the amendment first, before you vote on the other one, right?
The limitation on people. That's gonna.
We made the motion.
Drive it right there, you're not gonna have.
I did.
All them boats are rafting anyways.
Robert, and seconded. Okay. I have a motion to amend the motion to permit restaurant and partial special land use. Motion made by Robert Harold, seconded by Harold, no rafting.
Robert Muesling. What did you say?
Robert.
Robert and Harold, that's what you did. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Amend the motion to permit restaurant and partial special land use, no rafting. And that's it.
Okay.
You have to attach the first motion to understand.
But we have to take a vote on this first.
Right.
Okay, roll conference.
Keith Bell. Edward Keller. Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane.
Yes.
Mark Borschard.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling.
Yes.
Kathy Schmiker.
Yes.
The amendment passes.
So now we're back to the original motion.
The original motion as amended.
As amended, thank you.
The motion as amended by Cozel, seconded by Simon, allows for a special land use as specified on page six, attached and recorded, and amended. Permitting only one boat at the seawall, BG, no rafting. Is that pretty much what you have written down too?
Outdoor entertainment restricted to.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's on my page that is attached.
He wants to attach page six of sixteen. Which is out of the last.
Right here.
Finder from the applicant.
Because I don't have enough room to write all this down here.
Any other discussion? Harry, none, roll conference. You want paper?
No, no. Keith Bell, A B, Edward Keller, A B, Whitey Simon, yes, Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane.
Yes.
Mark Borschard.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling.
Yes.
And Kathy Schmiker.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now my question is with this site plan that we have. Do we need to add all these tonight and do what we normally do, or?
Uh, no, I would suggest that, um, like I said, there's gonna be a separate permit drafted. That will then be presented to the chair to sign, and then will be given to the applicant. That can be attached to the site plan. As a record of what was approved.
Basically, this and what she has recorded will be put on paper to attach to our.
The, the special land use permit is gonna have all of that on it.
Okay.
And is there something we take care of if it's meeting, or is there something?
Oh, that's just administratively, that, that you take care of as a chair, yes.
So, I, my copy shows we see November twentieth, so I need.
You want one?
As long as it's not bottom top.
Nope, I didn't write on it.
Okay.
This goes with this, right?
That has to go with that.
Yes, do the.
Of course. And sixteen in there?
No, it's page of sixteen.
I got it.
All right, thank you, everybody. Moving on to item number eight, planning consultant's report, master plan. Oh, okay.
Okay.
I guess we're gonna take about a two minute break, because Eric needs to set up the.
Two minutes?
Approximately. It's eight thirtyish now. Yes, bathroom break, how about we just do it that way, bathroom break?
Correct, correct. You can sue if you. Absolutely, absolutely.
I can't see shit.
Oh wait, we gotta wait for Christine to come back.
Well, she took the bathroom.
She did, Eric was, yeah, Eric was quicker than she thought.
Okay, so, uh, last week we sent out the first part of the first draft of the master plan, and I'll just go through that, uh, page by page, um, briefly. Um, so we've tried to include some images to make the plan more readable and enjoyable. Um, this is the table of contents, um, as you can see, the green items are outstanding, um, that will be completed as we, uh, continue. Uh, there'll also be a table of contents for maps and figures and tables in the plan, so that if you're looking for the future land use plan or other, um, important documents, you have a, a quick reference, um, to the page for that. Um, so the first text portion is the introduction to what the document is, explaining that it's an update to the two thousand twelve master plan and how the document is, uh, to be used, and then also mentioning that there are goals and other items of importance that will be, uh, later on in the plan. Uh, so Clay Township is a very historic community, as you know, um, and this page talks about the set, uh, historic setting in the county, um, the surrounding jurisdictions that shape the boundary of Clay Township and impact the township, and then there's also an ad to the historical society, um, and some information with that, a group that, um, readers of the plan can, um, pursue on their own, um, specifically the Chronicle, uh, series of, uh, Clay Township and Algonex history. Um, so, um, looking at the history, um, we, we're starting off with the impact of transit on Clay Township, this is pre-automobile, um, talking about how that, uh, shaped the township, um, providing accessibility to the township as a resort community. Um, this is kind of a neat map that was in the brochure, uh, for the Detroit, uh, United Railway, uh, showing the, um, interurban around the lake, lakeshore, and also that what's known as the shortcut, uh, which is what shortcut roads named for, uh, which connected Anchoville directly to Marine City if you didn't want to travel, uh, through Clay Township. And then also, uh, the image at the top right, um, may look familiar, this is the trail that's in the St. John's Marsh, um, it's part of that trail bed, um, was the interurban track, which is why it's elevated above the marsh, so, uh, just some graphics and images to help, um, make the plan look attractive. Um, again, continuing with transit, we have another page, um, this focusing on, um, the, the interurban running through the marsh. It ran on a kind of an arc through the marsh and then on the east, uh, current east boundary of the marsh, and we have a picture of the Pearl Beach, uh, station. Um, there were informal stations such as grocery stores and more formal stations later on, which is, uh, at the Township Hall property, and again, another map, um, showing that route in a different way, uh, connecting Detroit to Port Huron. Uh, so the next part of history is Saint, is Harson's Islands and the flats, uh, much of this text is from the current plan, um, but we've added some images from the Library of Congress to help, um, lay out that narrative. Uh, the top image is known as the Venice of America, is what it's titled, um, in the Library of Congress's records. And also at the bottom, um, we have something on the founding family, uh, the Jacob Harson's homestead and how, uh, his property was divided up, uh, among his children. Uh, we have more, um, history here with Harvey Stewart, uh, Harvey Stewart, the first supervisor of Clay Township, and there's also a mention that he was, uh, managed a distillery at the time, which is interesting, uh, as there's a new distillery, uh, on Harson's Island, so it's kind of a neat, um, tidbit. Um, also, um, the first school in St. Clair County was on Harson's Island, which is interesting, uh, fact, and there's some more discussion of the families. Um, and the bottom right paragraph, um, is interesting, um, in fact, you might know about as far as Anchor Bay, and when North Channel was used prior to South Channel, um, ships with heavy cargo would unload, and then the cargo would be carried separately, and then they would reload once they came through the channel, prior to it being dredged and, uh, widened, uh, where it, um, is today. So this, um, this dredging and widening of South Channel accommodated the resort and hotel industry, uh, that flourished on the island, and there are a lot of images, um, on the numerous hotels, um, including the O Club, uh, that existed on the island during the resort time, uh, ending with the Tashmu, uh, in nineteen thirty-six roughly, so running from late eighteen nineties to, uh, nineteen thirties. Um, this is a section that's in your current plan, notable subdivisions, um, there are three really that are notable, the colony with the water tower lighthouse, uh, that's iconic, which was planted in nineteen twenty-six. Also, the golf course that's on St. John's Marsh was related to the colony, um, it's no longer there, but, um, there's a marker off M twenty-nine that, um, is roughly where the entrance to the golf club, um, was. Uh, also St. John's Drive, planted in nineteen thirty-five, and Anchor Bay Drive, planted in nineteen twenty-one. So that's, um, part of the history, now we're getting into more of the current, um, plan information, regional setting, this is just, uh, more so for people that aren't as familiar with Clay Township. Um, influences on the township, so state-owned property is, uh, a big part of Clay Township, there's approximately seven thousand acres of state-owned land, um, primarily over three areas, Algonex State Park, uh, St. Clair Flats, and the St. John's Marsh, and then also talking about the importance of M twenty-nine, uh, it in, uh, connects twelve communities and sixty percent of the St. Clair, uh, county population. Uh, so something we also look at is planning that's been done in surrounding communities, um, there's been a lot of planning done at the county level, um, so we're pulling in some of the relevant information from those plans. Uh, the, uh, St. Clair County Master Plan talks a lot about smart growth and placemaking, uh, and within that, we're referencing the Clay Township Park as a, an excellent example of a placemaking, placemaking project, uh, that local communities, um, can take on. Um, next is a St. Clair River area of concern, this is another county plan, um, we're not necessarily doing anything with this at this point, but we're, um, referencing it, um, just to have consistency between the county and township plans. Um, so resilient communities is important, ongoing issue, and we're gonna be developing, um, this further later on in the plan, um, but this is the county's, uh, resiliency, um, information, talking about potential hazards, uh, that should be considered for individual communities. And then more, uh, on that, again, will be, um, looked at further. Uh, so the county future land use map, um, designates the middle core mainland of the township as developable parcels, um, so that'll be something we look at with updating your future land use, uh, plan, is that core truly, uh, prime, um, development area, that's. Um, what are the projections for that look like, um, is that an accurate, uh, depiction of, uh, Clay Township at the local level? And then there's, uh, the St. Clair County Master Recreation Plan, uh, the county has a parks millage that goes towards county parks, um, and their map includes county parks, uh, the Bridge to Bay Trail, and also the state-owned property, so, um, not necessarily county-owned property, but trying to capture all of the, um, recreation assets, uh, in the area. And then again, um, just another fact, including from that millage, so from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand sixteen, uh, the county collected fifty point six million, uh, from the millage with a total of seven hundred and fifty thousand being distributed to Clay Township, uh, during that time, and that allocation's based on, uh, population of the community. And then this is the Blue Ways, uh, water trails, and there's some more, um, focus maps that we'll likely include in the appendix, um, just for those trails, uh, in Clay Township, as, as you can see, most of the, um, lake water trails are in Clay Township, so that'll be, um, good to have those maps. And then from the Blue Water Trails, uh, master plan, um, more about connectivity, uh, and providing, uh, recreation opportunities, and there are some specific, um, elements that are proposed, uh, for the site across, um, from Kroger, so that can be something we look at, um, as far as the future land use plan, um, implementation strategies or whatnot, are these things that, um, we want to look at further, or are these things that we want to keep, um, separate, um, at the county level? And so this is looking at, um, the surrounding communities, uh, future land use plans will, uh, make sure that yours align, um, with Algonex especially, and then Ira Township to the northwest. Interesting note in the Algonex plan is there's no industrial property in the city of Algonex, um, but the Fruit Street industrial area that's in Clay Township obviously serves as their industry, as a shared industrial area, so, um, that'll be, uh, an area we look at with, um, correcting the future land use map as far as matching existing zoning and existing uses, um, that are there. And so the last section of the first part is demographics, which we've looked at previously, and we've, um, refined that and cleaned that up, um, with, uh, trends and projections for population. Um, you're, you've leveled out and you're slightly decreasing, um, similar to surrounding communities, uh, Chesterfield Township is really the only booming, um, growth-wise community in the area, as you may, um, understand. Um, next is a population comparison, uh, the township's median age is eight years greater than the counties, and over eleven, uh, years greater than the states. And now some, um, household, uh, data, uh, in two thousand seventeen, there were four thousand and nine households in the township, people living alone made up twenty-nine percent, uh, and, and with slightly more than ten percent of those over sixty-five, so, um, as you know, you're an aging community like many, uh, in the metro Detroit area, so, uh, these are the stats that, um, show that. Um, educational attainment is something we'll likely expand on, um, we would like to have, um, as far as the percentage of your residents that have either a bachelor's or a graduate degree, what sectors, um, those are in, whether those are business degrees, engineering or whatnot, so that's something, um, we're still looking into, if that's, um, information that's available. Uh, more on housing, uh, the township's five thousand five hundred and sixty-nine housing units, seventy-one point nine percent were occupied in two thousand seventeen, eighty-six percent were owner occupied, and fourteen percent were occupied by renters. Um, so sometimes those renter occupation, um, numbers can seem high, um, those are, are, to keep in mind, those aren't apartment buildings necessarily, but there's many single-family homes that, um, function as rentals, especially since, uh, the recession has occurred. And then, uh, breakdown of the type of housing units you have, so you're predominantly single-family, uh, which is common, uh, in the area. And then lastly is, um, two pages on transportation, so this is the functional classification system, um, this is a national system used to identify roadway types, so your arterials are major roadways such as ninety-four, M twenty-nine, uh, that collect, that connect large areas over large distances, um, collectors make that connection between the arterials and local streets, and then local streets are your subdivision streets and your, uh, streets that provide you direct access to your, uh, house or your business, so, um, that'll be something that will be later on in the plan, but, um, setting up what that is as a, uh, knowledge base. And then lastly, this is, uh, inflow-outflow, so the eight hundred and nineteen are people that don't live in Clay Township, that come to Clay Township to work. The three hundred and one are people that live in Clay Township and work in Clay Township, and then the three thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine are Clay Township residents that leave the township for their work. And we'll be expanding on this with, uh, some text explaining, uh, what it is. And then lastly are natural features, so, uh, wetlands are predominant in the township, and then we have a map of that. Uh, flood plains are more predominant, and that's been updated with FEMA, and we'll, uh, make sure that we have the most current information for that. Prime farmland, uh, corresponds to soils, uh, which is the next, uh, and final slide of the first section, and then this will lead off into, um, the next part that we get to is, uh, setting their goals and visioning, um, to discuss with the master plan, so, um, that's all I have, we can, um, it's up to you how you want to comment on this now, um, or if you want to wait, or, um.
I appreciate the presentation, um, because maybe a glitch in our township email system. I got your electronic version of what you just showed us last week, but the actual hard copy, I didn't get anything until last night's mail, so, from that point of view, I appreciate the presentation.
If. Yeah.
So.
A good way to comment too is just to write it on the page, and we can just collect that if that's.
So I don't really have any reading on my page at this point. So, at our February meeting, goals and objectives will be.
Tongue-in-cheek, I have a question, how do I get from Harson's Island to the mainland? Do I fly?
It's a private transportation company, it's audio fair.
That's, um.
Should you have a dotted line at least to allow me to come across?
That's mentioned, I think, in the plan as far as Harson's Island section, but that'll be later on when we talk about, um, contingency lines and.
I, I really have one other question though, what are the projections as far as our gaining or losing population in the next five years as we're approaching our five-year modification? We continue to lose. Light increase? Thank you. Well, I looked at that and I.
That's right where the, boy, that gray area.
This is your peak and this is your current, so it's.
A little bit, and the SEMCOG projections, they didn't necessarily pan out for past projections to current year, so it could.
But those are SEMCOG's projections?
It's births, deaths, and then inflow-outflow, so, it's really those two groups. Two thousand.
Any other questions, or do we want to?
I want to read it before I really say anything.
I'd have thought that's why luckily I just got mine.
I didn't catch it, but when are we gonna have the joint, uh, session for the master plan?
That, it hasn't been set, but we'd like to do it in February, um, it could be your regular meeting if possible.
Is there a due date on this, when it was supposed to be completed? Were you guys?
I think that's what we were talking, I mean, it's a target, it's not necessarily a sudden stop.
Okay, all right, okay, so it's open, okay, so it's, it's still, it's still, um, up for revision, right?
Yes, yes. This is just, this is a drag. This is just a draft.
You're going to keep getting pieces of it, and you can always go back and see something that needs to be amended.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So fasten your seatbelts, you're going to see a lot happen.
Ready.
Any other questions, or are we all set with this part of it? All right. Any other information from our planners? No?
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much. I'm going to move on to item number nine, which is ZVA Representative's Report, which is here.
Yes. Rod, do you know when we're really going to look at the boathouse issue?
That's supposed to be part of the joint meeting.
Okay, yeah, because they keep talking about a joint meeting, and we just had two of them that just come aboard in front of us. And they're going with the ordinance, but they're granting variances to the ordinance.
We need to get it resolved, and that's what the joint meeting is.
Okay, joint meeting more than just for the master plan?
I thought it was primarily, I thought it was primarily discussed the boats more than anything. That was my...
Okay, that wasn't my understanding at all.
No, I thought it was the boathouses itself.
I thought the boathouses was the focus of the joint meeting.
No.
It was something we suggested to...
It might have been a suggestion, but I had asked that maybe we try...
It was coming from several different directions.
It was to try to get the Planning Commission to hear what the ZVA and the board are seeing, to try to have a good understanding. So it started with the boathouses was the reason that we were thinking about doing it, rather than present you with the issue and discuss it just with the Planning Commission further, to have everyone involved with that.
Okay, wait a minute, is a joint meeting with the ZVA?
ZVA, Planning Commission, and Township, that would be my understanding.
Yes. Because this needs to be hammered out because we're violating the ordinance, and then they're granting variances on it. And people are coming and asking questions, and Chartiers Boathouse seems to be the topic of conversation.
How about our building inspector that we have? Would he be in attendance?
Yes, he will need to be. He would need to be, because he's the one trying to enforce the ordinance as it's written.
Why shouldn't he?
But then they come up for a variance. And they use Chartiers, they use a bunch of them, the two new ones on South Channel, the one over here on North Channel in the mainland. I mean, you can't grant one variance to some people and then tell other people, "No, you can't have that." And that's what the problem is, they're coming up and they're saying, "Well, you gave this guy a variance, I want my variance, too." And that's what's coming up to us every time.
I think it's mostly a listening session for the Planning Commission especially. I don't know that you'll need to take any action, but it'd be good to do at some point. Sooner would be better.
Are we proposing our February meeting? Is that, do I need to reach out to somebody? I mean, that's a lot of people put together one...
There was an initial date that was proposed, I think that's going to happen. So I haven't heard anything recently, so we'll follow up and see.
We'll try to make it.
The supervisor will reach out.
I don't think I was in the list.
We were going to try to do it in January, but it just didn't, it just didn't happen with the holidays, trying to get that scheduled. So we haven't, we haven't tried to set a date yet, so we can start with your regular meeting date if that is best for you.
But in the list should be ZVA, planning, township board, building inspector, or official. Any others?
They're the only ones looking at it.
All right, I look forward to an email or phone call. Anything else, Harold?
No, that was it. It's just the boathouses. That's really what the concern is for most of the public to ask him. And I think it needs to be addressed.
Item number 10, thank you, Harold, is Board Representative's Report.
This doesn't pertain to the Planning Commission as such, but the board is having discussions concerning high-water contingency plans coming this year, so we'll be working on that plus ferry issues, far as contingency plans are concerned.
Item number 11 is Chairperson's Report. I don't have anything to report. She wanted to make some up, no. I was just going to say thank you to everybody for all their hard work on our projects from 2019, looking forward to 2020, hopefully, went smoothly. I'm sure we'll have our end-year report, something showing up. That's not a guess. All right. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report. Number 12, will be planning measure of number comments. Everybody says he's talked enough. Anybody else? Nope. Item number 13, public comments. Anybody wishing to make a public comment? Please remember the rules that I'm not going to really reread again because we've gone too much. I would love please come to the podium, stage your remarks.
Ron Pocley, 7771 Phillips Drive, lived in this township since '74. Well, this board is open to can of worms. The citizens of Clay Township, which a great majority don't want this facility, but you voted for it. It's a sad day, and many of them will not get a good night's sleep because of it. It should be rejected on noise and traffic alone. How are the people going to be counted? We say, okay, you can't have over 250. You have 118. What does that mean? You're going to go through a turnstile? What's the penalty for noise after 10 o'clock? For rafting? For fireworks? You have no teeth in those recommendations that you voted on. Is a policeman going to come every night and blow the horn and check and count and so on? These aren't Boy Scouts. These are drunks and motorcycle gangs. So who's going to pay for that supervision? The citizens of Clay Township. I guess that's it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Gary Yonner, Alec 52624, Laurel, Oakland, and Chesterfield. I just have a few comments. In the beginning of your discussion tonight on the blue horseshoe, you said that they had to be in compliance with all the provisions of the special land use, and then in that early discussion, several of you said that they didn't meet the master plan requirements and some of the others. But then when you voted, you all voted that the program was okay. I corresponded with you on December 5th and pointed out part of your ordinance says, like, for an entertainment place, you have to have 10 acres in size. You never discussed that issue at all, to my knowledge. You acknowledged parking deficiencies, and part of your ordinance says, when you have an entertainment or recreational facility, you need additional parking. You never addressed that. In part of your discussions, you noted the deficiency as to lavatory facilities, but you made no modification as to what they submitted or to enhance that. And it's my understanding that there's no signage approval in their submission or none approved by you, and part of their signage was to control the traffic and the parking. So I think there's a lot of deficiencies in what you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
7931 Stark, Charles Hannah. Just a very quick question. Is there any decibel level associated with the outdoor entertainment? Is there any cap on dBs that can be allowed?
Yes.
Okay, there is.
In the ordinance.
It is in the ordinance. Okay. And then the other question I have is, when they did the noise study, unfortunately, I didn't get an opportunity to see that. You said that they did submit a noise study. What is it? Can I ask what it's based on? Do you know what it's based on?
It's on the website.
It is on the website. Okay. So was it, can I ask if it was taken over several different days or a single day?
I would suggest you read the website.
Okay, I will. I will. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to make a public comment?
Can I just read some notes?
Any what?
Can I just read some plots in this project? Tom Purcell, 782 Lake Drive. These are just random points to consider. Take it for what it's worth. A lot of these points have already been touched. Fisher Bay was the first boater's hangout until the water went low, then the boaters moved to a big muskamoot, which had a better water flow. Water got deep and they moved to Little Muskamoot, then they moved to Munchies Bay, which they are now. With this project pending, I think the homeowners, I think of the homeowners in area, especially the residents on Munchies Bay and Stark Drive, and what some of the residents have been saying in the past meetings. Another point, has anyone discussed the project with border control? I know they watched the ferry at Harson's Island, Algonac River, Bobby Max, Capri, Legas Restaurants, public access at Algonac and the Palms Road. This would be just another point they have to monitor. It would be very easy for a crowded boat to pull up, a lot of people, and leave with just a few. Traffic, traffic parking is always going to be a problem. The driveway does not, driveway does not pose an easy entrance and egress. Summertime traffic on weekends is bad. At times, leaving my street, you almost have to turn right to go left. As mentioned before, the Dollar General come up with the turn lane was based on six to eight turns. How many vehicles would you expect at a wedding, graduation, or so-called event? Since it started, they have been managing, massaging the numbers on the parking lot for boats and cars, trying to justify its occupancy. It's like they're trying to stuff 10 pounds of junk in a five-pound sack. At the last Planning Commission meeting, the PowerPoint presentation painted a pretty picture of a sunset wedding. Anchor Base summers are short, Memorial Day to Labor Day, 12 weekends. You have to figure in, you'll probably lose the first four weekends for the fish flies. That doesn't leave much time for the, you know, to make money. Okay, the term so-called events is a gray, leaves too much in question. They must have some kind of idea of what type of events they want to attract, you know, attractions. Fishing contests, concerts, or even the occasional wet t-shirt concept. If their, if their event is there, will it close the restaurant? Also, someone brought the question last time, what is the project's business plan? Do they feel a restaurant alone with weddings and graduations are going to be enough to make this endeavor work? There must be higher expectations of what this project can generate. They mentioned poker runs. Would that be a good idea in a congested swimming area? Case in point, I had a cottage on Big Fisher Highway, middle channel. Browns had a poker run. A few of the offshores, for whatever reason, came down Fisher Highway on plane, both ways. Fisher Highway, no wake, all boats. It's not Brown's fault, but it's a kind of event that you want to attract that. It may generate money for the cause, but how much does it generate for the hosting mariners? Also, in the past presentation, you showed boats rafting together. The best example around here of dedicated raft off is that Little Muskamoot Bay. This, they raft side to side. If one wanted to leave, they could just untie and go. Your scenario shows them blocking, locking in as a group, four breast, eight to 10 boats long, and a canal on the south end of the property. Is this convenient or safe? At Brown's, a lot of the time, the boats are jockeyed around in the canal looking for open boat well. Rafting may happen a few times, but it's not the norm. If they do raft off, that's likely they're traveling together and they know each other. Can you imagine coming to a wedding or graduation with many guests, parking in the rafting situation like the one they suggest? And when you take it all in and look at the big picture, it looks more and more like a munchies put-in bay. A lot of people are against change. It's just the nature of the beast. Most are comfortable with the way things are. Everybody would like to see things get better. They don't want to lose what they have. I myself like to see something nice developed there and be the first to support it, but I wonder if this is it. Until last meeting, everybody was confused as to the extent of the project, and there was a lot of rumors flying around. Either Christie or Kathy held up a big pile of paperwork, and it was just like data overload. And if that's the case, how is the normal guy supposed to distinguish all that? And how do you expect the average resident to understand this? And how else can we get information if we don't come to these meetings? It was a great idea, or if this was a great idea, this would have been resolved a long time ago. Say this project goes well, no problems, everything comes together, property values go up, as well as taxes, all is good, everybody's happy. Now say it goes south, not doing as well as expected, traffic problems, whatever else may happen. Could it possibly hurt our neighborhoods and property values? If so, do we have a recourse? You want to be optimistic, but is there a plan B? These are all questions and points that consider because most involves our greatest investments. It's a job of the commission to help the township grow, but also protect the owners.
Any other comments?
You should add comments before the vote.
Go ahead, sir.
Too late now.
We had a public hearing that went on forever. We did have time for public comments, so...
My name's Tony Katschowski, Lake Drive. My concern is people going underneath the bridge, going into St. John's Marsh, parking at canal, walking across that M-29 because it's all public property. You're not trespassing. What's going to stop people from doing that? They can park in that canal, nobody's going to monitor that, right? It's all public access. Oh, okay. You got Munchies Bay on a weekend, you probably got, what, 2,000 to 5,000 people there? What's going to stop them from walking in the water up to that restaurant bar, whatever you want to be, whatever you want to call it? Who's going to stop them? Who's going to monitor these people? They're going to go there, you know that. Have they been drinking? Okay, speakers at the canal, at the restaurant. Who's going to control the volume? How big are these speakers going to be? Does anybody know? Okay, if they have a bingo game, I'm going to hear, B1, I-69? Am I going to have to hear that? I don't want to hear that. If anything, they better control those speakers. Because like, everybody knows, sound travels over water. And my last question. How many of you people live in the area that will be affected by this? Any one of you? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the board? Any other public comments? See? Oh, no. I'm only giving everybody one shot at this, sorry. Thank you, though. I see no hands raised, so at this point, I'm going to move on to item number 14, which is adjournments.
Move.
All in favor? All opposed? Leading a adjournment.
Stay.
Huh?